I'll call the Dixon County Commission to order, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we did have some additions to our agenda today. Is consider approval of the H-piling for future bridge projects, thirty-six pieces there, and it shows the two bids we got. And consider appointment of Gary, is that Scooley?
Scooley, Scooley.
You fill vacancy, Vice Chair of the Sewer District Number Three Board of Directors. That's the only two additions.
Have we approved agenda with the additions?
I'll say. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. The consent agenda or the minutes of the March twenty-first work session and regular meeting, payroll of two-hundred-and-thirty thousand ninety-three dollars and sixty-seven cents, fund expenditures of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand forty dollars and ninety-seven cents, and abatements of six thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and four cents. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We're moving it second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Commissioners' comments and committee reports, if you have anything.
Kennedy, Mac breakfast with Lynn and Brad this morning. The next one would probably be more informative of what's gonna happen on Fort Riley when the Garrison Commander gives his report. I mean, if you want it probably be, you know, more local impact would be what's gonna happen at Fort Riley if the Garrison Commander will be there. On the Internet, just Orange Safety Week is coming up, KDOT's got that, so for safety in the road department. Matt, follow my comments.
Just a little bit of a follow-up of what Craig had mentioned. We did attend the MAC breakfast, and that's actually, it's Military Affairs Council in Junction City, and they had one of their larger attended events today because they had General Mayville as the Speaker, and he had been over at Afghanistan and really just kinda gave an update, and very straightforward as he spoke. And so it was interesting to see some of the progress, but also to, you know, this isn't something filtered through the media or whatever, I mean, he was just reporting what they did. And they do have these breakfasts, they're early in the mornings, but they're the fourth Thursday, and as Craig mentioned, they're gonna have the Garrison Commander, Bill Clark, speak next month, and so they do kinda give you an overview, and we are impacted, you know, and we've, Fort Riley's one of the largest employers, it is regionally, you know, they're one of the large ones for the whole state of Kansas, and so we have a lot of those people in the Chapman area, and some of the rural areas, and in Abilene, and part of the school district, and so it was a nice event to attend. And that's about the only thing that I have attended since the previous week, and I don't know if Brad wants to add anything to it, but the other thing that was a little bit of interest, kind of a sidebar that we benefited from, they had some of the representatives from the congressional representatives that were there, some from Washington DC, and then others that were from regional offices, and so we happened to sit at the table and were able to visit with Carolyn Proch, and she's with Jerry Moran's office, and she was back here from DC, and then there were a couple of them that were from Congressman Hills Kemp's office, and so it was kinda interesting, 'cause while they were there for the military piece of it, we also had someone at our table that was from the school district over at Junction City, and they were kind of putting their, putting it out there. But, you know, I think it's good for those congressional people, their representatives and senators, for them to be out and hearing what we have to say on a local level. And so, anyway, it was a good breakfast to attend and very informative.
I was over at the farm show, what's going on yet today over in China, and of course, I guess at those kind of events, maybe I wasn't there to really look, but it, there was a lot of neighbors and contact people, you know, that you got to visit with, so it ended up for me more of a social event than looking at the farm equipment, but anyway, I did get a new calculator I brought in, so we're gonna...
Well, I didn't get a calculator, but I spend, I was able to spend some money with some people at the farm show.
Well, you gotta spend, this is Harris Crawford's, you have to spend a lot of money against that.
He gave us that right in front of me. I didn't give him, he gave it right in front of me.
Yeah, and I got a real nice pin from my banker, too.
You can pay for that all the year.
So, anyway, that was about all of the day, I guess, I've attended, so. Our hearing is not till eleven fifteen, so Brad, do you wanna fill in some space here?
Sure, I'll see if I can get done in that time. We have an application for payment on Sewer District Number Three, this will be the second payment, that by the USDA rules, you guys have to approve, it's also on the accounts payable register, but it's a blueberry and seven thousand for the current work being done, to get to that regular meeting. You had asked for an estimation on what, of course, that sales tax countywide would generate, and based upon the last several years' worth of sales tax across the county, we believe that that would generate roughly two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars, just for information, for discussion, when the time comes. Earlier this week, we had a representative from Homeland Security, Pete, come in and sit with several of the staff and myself, and we went through our day-long security assessment on the courthouse facility, very enlightening. We have quite a number of issues that we need to address in one way or another, and some policies that we need to develop and correct, so we'll be working on that to increase the security of our physical plant. Next week, on April fifth, at ten o'clock, Governor Brownback will sign the legislation that creates the Eisenhower license plate, but I think you all three have heard Representative Parker talk about it, he was responsible for it, and that's my understanding, and if anyone would like to go down and be present to witness that, the city, I believe, is sending a few people, and we can maybe call a pool or set something up, so by the end of the meeting today, if we can have a number, I'll let the city know, we'll make arrangements, so. And just for a little background, that was, my understanding was an effort on behalf of the Eisenhower Foundation and Representative John Barker that we're able to get that through, and I think it'll be really good to honor President Eisenhower. We have our staff, John and Martin met with KDOT personnel and pre-construction meeting earlier this week on the K-43 Culver project, and they came to a couple offers, that's kind of, the pre-construction meeting, in some of those things, it almost got to barter session, but in this particular case, Highway forty-three will be closed for the duration of that project east of Detroit, which means, obviously, you won't be able to get east to west, and KDOT has approached us about using Jeep Road and Old Forty as a detour off of I-70 to get to Enterprise in that Detroit, in that area. Not uncommon, we've done it before on projects, we don't have any objection, what we tend to agree to, there were three areas of concern, one being any damages and reimbursement, and what was put on the table by KDOT, and I have no reason to think they wouldn't approve, would be a ten thousand dollar cap being placed on that damage assessment to the life of that, which is ninety-five calendar days of construction. And what we would simply do is if we had to go out and repair any stretch of that road because of the extra traffic, we would submit an invoice to KDOT, and they would reimburse us up to the ten thousand dollar mark.
You have to show damage, though?
Yeah, yeah, they won't just, they won't just pay us, it'd be nice if they would, which we don't have a problem with, if there is any damage, we're gonna repair it right away, so.
Like you said, you pictured before.
Well, they do have to pay before and after, exactly. The other area of concern, one had to do with the continual work, we didn't, this is being done in conjunction with a project on I-70 from Abilene to Chapman. We did not want, not to take wood, but we didn't want the contractor to open up this road and close Old Forty by opening the Culver up, and then run off to I-70 and work for six months, and then come back and work on this one. We wanted to make sure that we had something in there, that once they started that, they would complete it and get Old Forty back and open as soon as possible, because we're trying to do that in between harvests like we do, and all of our projects like that. And that was a concern to us. And the third area of concern was the doubt of emergency vehicle traffic, and we're hoping that the contractor can leave some type of emergency access across that site, it wouldn't be a public access, but it would be of such that an ambulance or fire truck could get through during an emergency to get to, an emergency just on the other side, because having your clear I-70 around would cause a delay that could be detrimental to life or property, so. Those are three areas that we've made a request to them, it would be contingent upon us, agreed for them to use Jeep Road and Old Forty as a detour, and we sent that off to them, and we hope that they'll agree to that and get back with us and keep that project in line, so. We are still waiting on KDOT to give us a green light on the revolving loan, it's still making its way through all the bureaucracy and desks and PEC, so we hope to have that any day, we're gonna reach out and contact them again if we have anything today, tomorrow, see if they have any timeframe, simply because we do have our bid from Shilling that they submitted to us, and we wanna make sure we get that locked in as soon as possible. And then I provided you an evaluation, or evaluation summary of thirty-four of the evaluations that were completed at the township meeting Monday night, and overall, it was very positive. I know that I talked to Laverne and had some comments that he got, and I got a number of comments as well, and we'll put all those down and use those for next year's meeting. And if there are any comments on there that you wanna discuss in detail, we can certainly do that, so.
I have no comment on that. I haven't talked to Bob or any of the people from Noble Township, I talked to a couple of townships, I'm gonna meet individually with each township of the eight, and a little more detailed, a little more one-on-one, of what, you know, where I drive my figures to, and what my vision would be, but it has to be, like we said before, it has to come from the township, so. I know, I did have a comment that when I mentioned retirement, that that wasn't a good comment to bring up, you know, for, you know, people of farms, you know, retirement program, that wasn't, I tell people right after, what do you have retirement form for? I says, well, if you wanna get good people to work for you, you have to provide some benefits, but...
Well, they've been, as far as the labor, I think most of the townships have been very lean on paying, but, you know, they've been very efficient in what they've been doing, so it's...
Well, that's my opinion, efficient.
Well, I mean, as far as labor.
Yeah, well, you get what you pay for, too.
Yeah. Then, of course, the only other thing I had was on the additions to your agenda, one of them is steel purchase, just a bid for stock steel because of bricks projects, and then we had a resignation of Sewer District Number Three, and Gary Shearly has agreed to fill that vacancy, and that was the recommendation of the Board of Directors, so point him, so that's all I have.
Okay. Well, it is eleven fifteen, eleven seventeen, so I'll call the public hearing for the commission of district boundaries that we will be looking at today, and Sherry has got two maps that we, the commissioners, we had looked over this again, and you might give us a copy, too, but we kinda narrowed it down, that these two options were the two options that, that I guess we are preferred, and...
Thank you.
And as you will notice, District One, which is my district, remains the same in both of the proposals, so I guess it's, I don't feel like I should have a lot of influence because both options are the same for mine, but you put it on the screen up there, as you can see, option one, there would actually be, in District Three, would come into the west side of Abilene, in that precinct there. And then in option two, I guess it's basically anything that's in the Abilene city limits...
City limits of Abilene is District Two.
Would be District Two, and then everything that was outside the Abilene city limits in Grant Township would be in District Three, so. Does anybody want to address with comments?
I'm just listening right now. I guess I don't read maps very good, so I'll be honest.
Okay.
Where is, you're in District One, Harrington is in your District.
Yes, true.
So...
I would not be, like I say, I've got, I'd have the...
But does that mean that, that with coming up into the perfect part, does that mean that someone from the Abilene area could also...
No, District Two would just, Lynn Peterson is serving presently in District Two.
That's strictly Abilene.
And that's strictly Abilene in that option.
Okay.
And then the blue area would be Craig Chamberlain's area.
Okay.
And mine, mine is in the yellow.
If I understand your question, on option one, in theory, on option one in theory, it would be possible for someone in the city limits of Abilene to...
To vote for District One?
To have District, to have District Three on option one. That's the one on your left.
Right.
And that has a little bit of Abilene pieced out, only because of the population part they're trying to even that. On the option two on the right, that is the city limits of Abilene in its entirety, and that is only District Two.
Okay.
So in theory, you could only have one commissioner from the city of Abilene.
From Abilene, okay.
And the other two would be from the rural area, or, well, or from one of the other cities within the district.
Yeah, yeah, there's others, of course Chapman is in District Three, but Enterprise, I would have the most, in fact, when you break it down to rural, urban and rural, I have, because of Harrington, Hope...
Enterprise and Woodbine.
Enterprise, Woodbine, Carlton, you know...
You already do, you do currently, so, yeah.
I do currently, but, you know, when you actually look at my district, there's quite a bit of urban area in my district, too. But it is, I am covering the largest landmass, so, too.
Under, under none of the options, would a District One representative be able to come from Abilene or Grant Township?
And I think the formulation of these two options, a lot of it had to do with the response and comments that people had made at the previous meeting under the previous commission, and so there was an attempt to listen to those concerns, and yet, the other part, the important piece, was try to even things up population-wise, where they were a closer match, and you have the numbers on that, Sherry.
I did, you, they're on the bottom of the map, so I handed out...
They're on the bottom of the map.
And we had the comments that were sent in to, were there, I can't remember now, eight or nine of them were comments?
There are a couple more that came in the last couple of days, they didn't have a comment that they were both favoring option two, as were the majority that I sent you in the first place.
The comments we got off the website were, more of them were favoring option two.
Pretty, yeah, dramatically, it was favored, so.
And that option two is just leaving the town, the actual town of Abilene for one district?
For one district. Any other comments?
I wanna thank you guys for studying this, I was very upset the other, before the first year, where agriculture wasn't represented or anything else, and I think you guys worked this out real well, and I would like to have option two. In my opinion, I think that we gotta work together, and like, some of the federal people everybody works a lot better than what they do now, and I think we're trying to work together, get these things straightened out, and I think you guys have done a great job of figuring it out, and thank you for what you've said.
I guess option two, you know, we would definitely would know where the commissioners were coming from, there would be, I mean, we know there'd be one in the city of Abilene, would be one in the rest of that, those townships at the north, and like I say, my district, basically, the only additions to my district was New Bern and Garfield, is that correct? I added two townships.
And lost Reinhardt, right? Or you didn't have Reinhardt?
Never did have a Reinhardt. I actually just gained two townships to get my numbers higher, and of course, that took away from District Three, and in option two then, of course, Craig picked up the outside part of Grant around the city limits of Abilene to get his numbers up.
I appreciate what you did in November, was it in November we had the last meeting? When we had the last meeting?
The very end of election, very end of November.
I really appreciate what you did by table and giving it more time to look at over, because I do believe that each district like you have should have their own representative coming into it. I know we're small towns in that district, but I feel like we have a voice also.
Well, and truthfully, you know, we hope that in the future, that all commissioners are looking out for the entire county.
Right.
And we really hope that.
And we're together, and I do think...
We feel like that's, you know, that's...
And your population's pretty equal now, too, and everything.
And that should, you know, we're basically just trying to satisfy the state statute that says that we're supposed to try to keep them as close as reasonable, and...
Thank you for what you've done.
Are there any other comments, Dan?
So, just a question, 'cause I know when you guys had discussed the options a month and a half ago, one of the issues was the size of the, the size area-wise, 'cause obviously, if you cut Abilene by itself, that commissioner only has a small driving distance for, what's that, if you're up for election and publicizing, and also travel to get out, but I guess I'm asking the people here that are commenting, is it more the weight of the population versus the land area?
That's what you're trying to get, is your population, equalization, yeah.
The statute says you're supposed to try to balance out by size, and it's, and in my opinion, it's more to try to do it by population, because even if you go by size, unless you go back to the original one that was voted down, that was, population and landmass are the same, but the people weren't in favor of it.
I think you see pretty well that, that at the other meeting, the people, county
were pretty well upset with their, with the way they did.
Yeah, I wasn't on the board then, but you can tell by the number of people here, there isn't near the, kind of testament to what the...
About seventy-five people here a day, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, I guess, maybe you're trying to ask me, you know, whether I can serve this bigger district, and my answer is yes. I mean, communications are, you know, so much better, we got ways of communicating with people, and if it's necessary for me to drive to Harrington, I'll drive to Harrington, 'cause I, like I say, as a kid, I spent a lot of my days over there at Harrington at a business, so, you know, it's, it's, I think, like you say, with communications the way it is, it makes it easier to correspond, and I just, I'm a country person, you know, I'd drive fifteen miles to get to my meeting here, so, you know, Harrington's only twenty-five, twenty-four, so it's not that much to get there.
And we did have a tour here just the other week, where we visited facilities, and we were, we were able to spend some time at Harrington at the hospital, but to kind of echo what Laverne said, too, I mean, if someone calls Laverne rather than they call me, I mean, that's fine, but if someone would call me and say, you know, I've got a concern at Carlton, or Harrington, or, you know, any of the areas, I mean, I'd certainly be willing to listen and look at that, and, you know, from an administration standpoint, notify Brad, and, you know, I think any of the commissioners would be glad to respond on any particular issue, because whenever I go to sometimes a particular event, whether it's a pancake feed, or if I'm going through the grocery store or whatever, I mean, sometimes people run into you and they'll say, you know, I've got something going on in my part of the county, and, you know, we're there to listen, we're there to serve, so, you know, we have districts, but I think all of us have a county-wide, you know, viewpoint that we're trying to look at what's best for the county.
And I'm, I've got a lot of friends in Abilene, you know, and they talk to me when I see them at a ballgame, you know, so it's, it's, and I, as I, you know, we're just trying to establish so that people know what representative that's in their district, and I guess, when it comes to campaigning, I guess, as commissioners, we know which area that people are gonna be voting on us from.
One thing I would like to see down in Chapman, if you get this all gets done with, is some more people in, first responders, John Harris, one of our responders, he's a first for Fort Riley, and John Harris at school, and John, the other boy, he's at Fort Riley, so really, we haven't got much first responders over there, I'd like to have Mike Nikovsky trained or something like, you know, help us out a bit on that kind of deal, 'cause a lot of the time, we haven't got any first responders during the day. An ambulance service does a great job, but I mean, just a few minutes, I make a big difference in life with them.
Are there any more comments during this hearing? If not, we're closing the hearing, Dan, at eleven thirty, and back in the regular session.
Are we gonna be taking action on this, Laverne?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't, we didn't have any agenda, but I don't wish we...
How do we do that?
Well, we, it needs to be done by resolution, I believe, and we don't have a resolution prepared, but now, if you decide what you wanna do, we can prepare one for next week and...
Well, and truthfully, we haven't talked about it, so we need to, we need to talk about it, too.
I think one advantage is...
Give them some direction of which one of these we're looking for.
Thank you.
I think with the Harrington paper here and the Abilene reflector, too, what we've discussed in the comments, you know, they go out one more time, and if people have additional comments, then, you know, that way, there's no surprise, and so we could have it on the agenda next meeting, next week, and we'd have enough information to vote.
But we need, we need to give them directions, which map we're talking about, though.
Yeah, we need to put a resolution. What description to put in the resolution, so...
I think the option two is what we've heard.
Yeah, I agree.
The favorable comments and...
I think it's the simplest of things. I think everybody would, will understand, you know, who, what district they're in with option two, and like I say, I, I think from the comments we've heard, that's what most people have.
Is that the Haran plan, is that...
We could call, I was gonna say that, we could call it the Tim Haran plan, because I think he even published it in his little news column, that...
Made a comment on it.
Made a little comment on that, so... Made a little comment on that, so, we're just following what you recommended.
It narrows the scope, so.
It could be a green, yeah.
That'd probably be a headline of the paper.
Yeah, that could be a headline.
Well, it may not be your favorite.
Okay, well, it, should we have a motion on that?
Just instructions.
Instructions, so did you have a resolution for us next week to sign on option two? Well, I'm glad it was all three in agreement with that.
It'll be three years before we have to revisit the issue.
I think never.
No, three years. My law is three years.
I think you revisit it.
You revisit.
Yeah, I mean, but do, actually do it, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I don't think.
Misspoke there.
You don't have to.
No, you can't, you can't.
You don't have to change it, you just say you revisit it.
Yeah, you need to look at the population to see where it's.
Yeah, well, we're not, we're not going to know until they do another census, so.
We get, we get estimated, we get, we get updates of estimated population from the Census Bureau for the towns, for Abilene and Harrington only, and we get estimates from the state of Kansas, but I don't know if we're allowed to use them. My direction that I have received has always been using Census Bureau statistics, so I'd have to check into that.
Well, I was doing the budgets and stuff there, I, two thousand nine, two thousand and two, you know, that had budget or population numbers on it for every township, and they all changed.
And I don't know, I don't know what methodology they used to estimate that, and I think that's where the question is.
Okay.
The big redistricting that happens, happens with the census every time, because we can use that, we might be able to use the Kansas numbers, I just don't know. I haven't checked into it, so.
Yeah, I'm just not anxious to change it again.
I don't have to worry about it for a while.
All right. I guess Brad, you got through all of yours, so.
I did, yeah.
We're ready to move on to our notices, notices and communications. Thanks, Sherry.
Thank you.
This, I guess each one of you have this, and this does lift the meetings that, that the Kansas counties associations, Kansas Association of County put on, and like I say, the one workshop that I did attend last year was basics in county planning and zoning, but I think it, like I say, if you have an interest in any of those, you just have to let, get the reservations in and let them know ahead of time.
Shows if Brad or whoever registers this online will save five dollars, and then as part of our membership, we have the lower rate.
Yes.
So, that's. And there is one in Abilene, so they're going to, we'll have some visitors from around the state come in here on June eleventh. Do they notify you, Brad, on that to kind of set something up?
They usually work with us, a lot of times I have here at the courthouse, I don't know where that one's at, is it direct center?
I don't think it says.
Yeah, it'll be announced here and we'll coordinate with us, yeah. We'll provide the, provide the area and help with the arrangements.
Okay. We did get this letter from Central School District, they're not, seemed like we got this last year, too, and they're not in our county, so.
Is that tested for everything?
Yes.
This is still, does their school district go into Dickinson County?
Yes, yes.
Part of the school district does.
Very little down, down in here.
A little bit.
Couple of.
Center.
Let's go down south.
No, I thought you said central.
He did.
Oh.
Center.
Center, okay. But anyway, I can't remember what we did last year.
We haven't given them any widgets, but five districts have located or.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. But that, that was a letter from them. The Board of Emergency Medical Service, on the March nineteenth, they had performed inspections of Dickinson County EMS, and the only finding that they found was some outdated inspection cards on, I think on two fire extinguishers, and that was taken care of that day on site, so it sounds, it looks like they've got a very good report, which John always keeps things up to snuff, but. This is our invitation, I think a week or so back, they said that they'd be sending the invitation to us for the Friends of the Flint Hills Annual Reception and Recognition Dinner over in Manhattan at the new Discovery Center. I guess if there's some interest in commissioners attending that, there's, we would have to get your RSV sent in. And this was from K-Works. They, K-Works had put on a meeting, the Road and Bridge, training session for the Road and Bridge on, on safety aspects, and they actually, each one of them had to do a little test, and I looked through there, they're pretty good, like they haven't everybody passed, it looked like, and a lot of them didn't miss any questions, so I, that's, but the one question that some of them did miss, let's see, I don't see it right now on that Well, the question that some of them did miss was, part of the flagger's job is to protect work equipment, and actually the answer to that is false, I think they're supposed to look out for themselves first, so, but there is a little party in here that is in the bottom there for each one of them that took that test, so you can give that to Martin, and he can distribute that out to them. And then we, we just got the county news, NACO publication. Is that, is this in everybody's packet?
Sometimes it is and sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah, you got one, two, okay. Well, I thought, if some of that information is not in your packet, well, feel free to use it out of mine. Then we didn't have anything on emails.
No, just the one about the horn week.
Yeah, okay. All right, introduction, the considered, we don't have any resolutions today, move on, we, we got the payment for the, for the second application for payment on Sewer District Number Three. Well, here it is. Yeah, so I guess we just need a motion to make that payment.
What part of the pay, how much were you paid so far then?
I think this makes about two hundred and fifty thousand, I think the first payment was a hundred and seven, and this one's a hundred and seven, so.
About seven hundred and seven, I can't remember exactly, seven hundred and.
The whole project?
Yeah.
One point one million.
Okay, what was J and K? That's what I, yeah, sorry, that's.
They were one point one.
Oh, one, okay, I didn't look at all the options, the stuff. Did they ever decide upon the option about the generator?
Yeah, the generator was period, yeah. The only thing that's left up in the air is, is the extra bed night, depending on what the lagoons find, or it's looking like it's not going to be needed, so.
Right, I guess, made a comment, looking.
So that's going to kind of depend on whether they have enough money to go in and do the, the crushing and filling in each septic system.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Try to get that reduced right, great, so. We're kind of waiting to see how the lagoons go, and they're, as you know, drive right, and they're getting into that far enough, so.
Yeah, the lagoons won't take that much more, there's, I went by this morning, it looked like the one next to the road is pretty well completed.
Yeah.
And the other's probably half done.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, I mean, they got big scrapers, they don't take, they're not moving the dirt very far.
Moving fast.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I guess we just move that we send in the payment for the Sewer District Number Three.
Second?
The move is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Am I the only one signing this, it looks like?
It looks like, yeah.
You co-signing? Yeah, I'm co-signing for that project.
I'm sure they'll pick the jack when it's.
That's because you have about four other people, population's actually zero five.
Yeah. Okay, and then we have these additions to our agenda today, considered approval of H-piling for future bridge projects, thirty-six pieces, thirty-foot H-piling, Husker Steel was nineteen thousand and ninety-four dollars, and, and Slina Steel was twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Is that delivered price?
It's.
Okay. Same, I mean, they bid both the same thing, I mean.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm, we, go ahead, Lynn.
I'll go ahead and, and give the motion that we do accept that bid on the approval for the H-piling for future projects from Husker Steel, and that was nineteen thousand ninety-four, you said?
Yes. Okay, I'll second that motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Then we have consideration, consider the appointment of Gary Shirley, you said, to fill the vacancy of the vice chair of Sewer District Number Three Board of Directors.
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
The move is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Doug, I didn't mean to skip over you today.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Save the best for last.
Roger.
Is that everything?
I don't know of anything else.
And, and you will have a resolution for this for us next week, all the districts.
We'll get something put together in the second of the day, and we'll get in.
What was that meeting time for, on the license plate, on the eyes and hour?
Ten o'clock, so ten AM.
Ten AM, and what was the date?
On April, yes, which I think is right next, where's it, no, Friday, next Friday, isn't it?
Yeah, Friday.
Yeah. So if you guys are interested in going down, or we can, you know, publish it if one wanted to go, and the city's sending somebody, so we.
I think I'd be interested, but I'm going to double check my schedule.
You can let me know when.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to do the same.
Just email here.
It might rain, so you couldn't be in the field.
Yeah, I won't be that busy doing any field work, I don't think, but.
And also on that, if you're, more than one of you is going to go to that.
Discovery, yeah, I won't be going.
You won't?
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Maybe I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'll have to let you know, too. Well, if there's no more business, I move with you.
Second?
Move is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Little history and.